I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Bryan City Council meeting for Monday, August 7th. Council, our first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the July 17th meeting. Do you have those in front of you? Have any additions or corrections? If not, I'll...
I will, I... I move that we accept that was as given to us.
I'll second. Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
You got it there. Item number two is the hearing of public concerns. Not seeing any concerns at this time. We will move on to item number three, which is an ordinance. Pat, would you please number and read?
This is ordinance number 28, 2017, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the City of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, and declaring an emergency. This is for appropriation to the capital line and $1,094,900 for the soccer light project.
I move we suspend.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I'll second. Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
I just should have raised it. Were you in any more discussion on this than any other than there was, it's gonna be later on, on that other ordinance?
Yeah, number 14.
Yeah, okay, okay, good.
Item number four is a resolution. Pat, please number and read.
This is resolution number 25, 2017, a resolution providing for the repayment of an inter-fund cash advance. This is for the repayment back to the 1% income tax fund. We received the monies for the new probation grant, Fund 220, $15,000 repayment.
That happens every year. They take it out of that, and then once they get their money, then they transfer. Money comes in about this time of year for the grant, so it's kind of an annual thing. It's paid back.
I move we suspend.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yeah.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Move to adopt?
Second. I'll make the motion, you second.
Okay.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Next item is another resolution. Please number and read.
Resolution number 26, 2017, a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Hile Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required.
Mr. Whelan?
Every year, we apply for at least one or two projects through Hile Public Works. We've been very successful. I think we had received some money two years ago on Fountain Grove, and actually this summer, we're gonna be bidding shortly, a sanitary sewer project that we discussed maybe three or four meetings ago. What we're looking at here this year is East South Street. Basically, we're gonna, we're doing the 100 block right now. We're gonna do the 200 block all the way to Union Street. We wanna look at doing an in-place reclamation like what we did on Fountain Grove Drive. Widen it slightly, get rid of some of the major ups and downs, not a lot, but just do some final tweaking in there. We really just wanna repave it, but there's some spots that the subbase is bad, and we wanna do some tweaking on it. So that's one project we're looking at. And also, I'm working with Nate and Norm and Kevin at the utilities. We're trying to find some projects that we can do a joint venture on with Waterline as well to see what we have. Nate and I have narrowed down two or three small projects, but in one of my upcoming conversations we're gonna have here later on tonight, you're gonna see that my budget's gonna be kinda strapped next year. So I'm not real eager to do a large joint project with them where we would have a lot of funding, where we would actually have to do a large street project as well with their water line. I'm looking at more of one where we just have a little bit of small street repairs to do on top of their water line. So we're trying to fine-tune our grant applications if we can come up with one of those that fits in there, that fits both my budget and theirs. So we've got till, usually those are due around Labor Day in September, so we've got a little time yet to figure them out. But I'm just asking permission to go ahead and apply for grants like I typically do.
I just have, you know, you mentioned the East South Street. Would that be curbed and gutted as well?
No.
No, just, that would be removal and...
Removal, tilling up, leveling, and repaving, correct, exactly like Fountain Grove Drive was. Yeah, basically, that would be a $700,000 project. Curb and gutter would be probably 2.8 million, 3 million, somewhere in that range, so...
Little difference.
Little difference, yeah.
And no sewers in that area. Those are all over there.
No, no, everything's fine. Yeah, the sanitary's fine. We would like to maybe do a little bit of additional storm sewer, but with the large ditch that runs back there through Stark's Meadow Brook, there's a positive drainage outlet there, so there's not much of a need in that area for additional storm sewer.
Is that a main flow down through there for the sanitary sewers headed out to the...
Uh, not through that area. It's actually south of there a little bit. It flows through Stark's Meadow Brook, and then flows along the south side of the creek and goes through that way. So there's an interceptor on the south side there, but not necessarily right down South Street. So I would request you to suspend the rules and authorize me to do this.
I'll second. Tommy?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Second to that.
Tommy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Next item is another resolution. Pat, please number and read.
Resolution 27, 2017, resolution authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to advertise for requests for qualifications, RFQ, from engineering firms for the final design phase bidding and construction engineering phase and construction monitoring for the 2017 Small City Project titled US 127 Main Street Resurfacing, PID 106399, WIL-127-2.28.
I wanna repeat that, Pat. Okay, I received notification in June that we were successful in receiving 1.219 million dollars in federal funds for the resurfacing of Main Street. We've applied year after year, probably four or five years in a row, and every year we seem to be cut short, but this year, we finally came up on that. So what this is, is the City of Bryan is not a pre-qualified design consultant for ODOT, so we have to consult with someone who knows their standards and can actually do that. So this is a qualification process similar to what we did with wastewater and with other projects in the past. We solicit qualifications, and we rank firms, and find one that's ranked high enough, and then negotiate a fee with them to proceed with this. We're trying to fast-track this a little bit. They gave me two windows of time when we could actually spend their money, and they said we could do it in July of 2019 or July of 2018. And I said, "Well, I'd love to spend it in July of 2018." So we're gonna, like I said, fast-track this, try and get a consultant on board. We should have our qualifications in by early to mid-September and be able to select the highest-ranking one and get started on that. Our timeline is March of 2018. We have to have final tracings to ODOT, and June of '18 will bid, and July of '18 will award, with construction in August, September, October. It's about a 30-day project to do what they need to do, but we've got a lot of areas that we need to look at. They're gonna replace some sidewalk, not a lot, just some minor sidewalk where there's accessibility issues at the intersections. I think we've got 60 manholes that we're gonna either replace, re-line, or rehabilitate, and well, some catch basins too, and then small areas of curving. Then they are gonna look, when we had our scope meeting last Monday, we're gonna look at the underpass. There's a concrete median that divides the two sections there. That's not, I don't wanna say not allowed, but it's not in their design criteria now. So they want me to look at different options for that median in there. They would rather not see a median at all, or see like some fiberglass markers that stick up. And for snow removal, that's not an option. So we might have to look at some changes in that median with just widening it out, leaving asphalt, and just leaving a wider striped area that nobody can drive through. But according to their criteria, we don't need a median there. And we've taken it out in other places in town as well through there. We've just left it through there. But it's crumbling, and that's one of the requirements that we need to address that as well. So one of the little things, I'm just giving you a little tidbit of information for what's going on here, but...
Now, that project, would that extend from the southernmost light to the northernmost light?
That would extend from just south of Bryan Ford, where they just rehabbed the concrete,
Okay.
down to about in front of Burger King, where we did our South Main widening project.
So not quite all that way?
No, not quite, because we just repaved that with the widening on the south side, and the north of town was just done last year when they did the concrete and went on out north, past our city limits there as well, so... But I'm pleased. It's a good project. They're gonna cover 95% of construction costs, up to 1.219 million.
Now, in a project like this, do they just take, grind down like the surface and then resurface?
This is considered a mill and fill, but they've got a certain square yardage of what are we gonna do underneath if we have problems? Because as you know, driving down where the underpass is at, there's several speed bumps. What we have there is, it was a concrete-paved street before. The concrete's shifting, it's heaving, it's pushing stone and asphalt up, so we're gonna look at what we can do to address that. Most of that extra work, if we do go above this 1.2 million, is gonna come out of our pocket, but that's okay. You know, I would rather spend an extra $100,000 and do it right, rather than shortchange ourselves and not do it right. So, but we'll tackle all that over the winter here, once we get a consultant figured out and get through the design phase. And I'll keep you guys in a loop as we come up with different things and get, oh, a better handle on the estimate once we get in the design phase. But with that, I'm happy to announce we did receive the grant funds, and we should be constructing next summer, which is extremely fast-paced for the Hile Department of Transportation, very fast. So I would request you suspend the rules and authorize me to request the qualifications, please.
Now, how much did you think our portion will be?
Well, we're gonna have...
One point?
Well, if it's one, I think our original estimate was 1.35 million, but that's us just looking at a piece of paper and, you know, measuring and doing a quick drive-by and saying, "Wow, maybe 20% of the curb is bad. Some of the catch basins are bad." You know, it's just a throw a dart at the board just to get things started. So, you know, our problem is, we're gonna have to front the money for this next year ourselves and then get the money back. And I don't say that's a problem. You know, I've got, there's a fair amount of money left in the 1/2% income tax that's sitting there that we always leave for a rainy day fund, just in case something happens. So, you know, we would just basically ask for an advance on it if I had to do a few other construction projects early in the year, and then we would just repay that advance later. So I've talked with Lori about it, and I think we can work through that everything. And if we need to rear-end load next year's design and construction on other projects, we will.
That's my concern. I didn't wanna, I was wondering where we was going here.
Before he's gonna wrap up too much money in this project? No.
That was going to affect some...
No, typically, my budget's 1.4, 1.5, 1.6, in that range with all my capital projects. So I'll have enough there if I don't do anything. But there's at least a million and a half, maybe 2 million. I'm just grabbing a number out of thin air. I think I'm close with it, sitting there in reserves that we can utilize, and it's just gonna be to borrow to put back. You know, we're not gonna be spending it. But we've done that on the other projects. We've done that with High Street. I think we cash flowed South Main on our own because it was early enough in our construction project, in our construction cycle, and smaller dollar figure that we were able to just take that out of our budget. But we may have to look at that too on our sewer project that we're doing this summer. If I've expensed out most of my budget, and that's a 50-50 project, I may have to ask for a $200,000 advance to cover me so we can utilize that to pay it forward, and then get reimbursed at the end of the year when they clear up their books on it, so...
Money usually comes back pretty fast.
Yeah, yeah. With ODOT, 30 to 60 days. Well, Hile Public Works, usually it's 30 days we get it back. So unless there's something wrong with some wage reports or something, but typically, it comes back pretty quick. And Lori would much rather do it that way, where we spend the money upfront, and then we get one payment back from them. It's easier for her to track on her books, rather than, some municipalities, they just cough up the 20%, and then ODOT covers the 80%, but we would rather come through our books, so it's easier to audit and easier to track and know exactly what we spent, so we'll make it work.
Now, how long of a period of time did you say that you thought it would take to do this project?
For construction, 30 days.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we would be looking at lane closures?
Right, yeah. There will be no, when we met at our scope meeting, we said there would be no detour around town. They would probably work on the inside lanes, on milling, and then go to the outside and flip-flop, basically like we did on High Street. I mean, there was a couple of times that we had closed, I know the railroad had closed it when they had done the crossing there, but we just did an in-city detour. But the gentleman from ODOT didn't see any reason why we would have to detour around town for this. There's no major crossings or anything that we have to do with utilities, so it should be fine.
Keep it out of Jubilee Week.
Oh, yeah, well, fortunately, we'll be awarding it in July with construction, August, September. So right about the time school starts, we'll be, we'll be able to tear up the street there, so... There's no good time to do construction. We've talked about this before, so we just make do with what we have and...
On Main Street there, right at the square, where it's so wide?
Right.
Would you go clear over to the courthouse?
Absolutely. Curb to curb, sidewalk to sidewalk.
Okay.
Yep.
Council, what are your wishes?
Make a motion to suspend?
I'll second. Tommy?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is a building permit.
Yep, we have one building permit, Nyhard Enterprises, 509 East Edricken Street. They're doing a almost 16,000-square-foot warehouse addition. Estimated cost is about $500,000. We received the final state-approved plans, and our office, the utilities office, has looked at it, and any corrections we've asked for, they've given us. So we're at the point where we're ready to issue the building permit, so I would request you approve it.
But didn't we, wasn't there a building permit for this earlier?
Nyhard Enterprises had another project going with some storage units on South Union Street.
Yeah, I thought, okay, I was thinking of this one here or something.
No.
Oh, I know. It was some tax payments or something.
Yeah, we did the CRA a month or month and a half ago on this particular building, correct.
Because I know they've been working on this project down there.
Right. They're getting to the point where they're ready to occupy it, or getting close to it, so that's where we're ready to issue the building permit.
I thought, geez, I know they've been working on that, now we're doing the building. Okay, that's what it was.
Yeah, typically, we don't issue a building permit until we get a final plan approval from the state. So if they had one or two issues with fire suppression, or who knows what, you know, it sometimes takes them a while to get us our final plans, so...
Council?
Make a motion to approve the permit.
Second.
Tommy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whelan. Next item is employee status change with Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Dom.
Good evening. This evening, I'd like to ask you to approve the hiring, or the employee status change for Courtney Powell and Angie Davis, two part-time preschool aides. Right now, they are preschool subs. What these two positions would do is they would fill the vacancy left by Darby Davis, which was a full-time position. So we'd fill one full-time position with two part-time employees. They would split the hours. One would work three days a week, one would work two days a week. But they would give us a consistent name and face in the classroom with the young kids. I'm asking you that you hire at $11 per hour, which is a little bit more than what we pay our subs. That way, it makes it worth them being there every single day, or every day they're scheduled to work. These positions were not necessarily budgeted for, because we didn't expect Darby to leave us. And our budget was completed once Darby, and then Darby left. So I do feel like I can take care of this within my budget by taking some of the money that Darby would've made out of the full-time and using it in the part-time area to cover these two employees.
This should be a great move in doing this. We've talked about that before. And these two ladies, I understand, worked before?
Yeah, yeah, they've been in our classroom. Courtney has been really active with us over the last couple of years. Angie's worked within our department for many, many years, so feel very comfortable with both ladies.
How is our numbers over there?
Actually, they're going back up again.
Are they going up?
We're back around, just off the top of my head, back around 60 kids in four sessions, so they are starting to go back up. We struggled there for a while, right around 45, 50, but we've seen a little increase the last couple of years, and they seem to be going back up. That's the other reason, you know, to be 100% honest with you, with our numbers the way they are right now probably don't justify replacing the full-time position. We can save quite a bit of money with these two part-time positions as opposed to a full-time position, when you start talking about benefits and insurance and all that kind of fun stuff that goes with a full-time position.
I move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Next item is yours as well.
I'm gonna stay with the...
New hire in the Parks and Rec Department.
I would ask council this evening to hire Jeff Arnold as a seasonal part-time employee for the Parks and Recreation Department. Jeff would fill the position vacated by Bryson North. Bryson has worked for us for about six or seven years. He is an athletic trainer with the Fairview School District, so therefore, their sports have started, and Bryson has to go back and be the athletic trainer. Jeff would be on our 60-inch mower and take care of all of our athletic fields.
I move we approve that.
I'll second. Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a new hire with our police department. Chief Fultz.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Not long ago, we gave a civil service test to fill police-fire dispatch positions. Jennifer McGowan was one of the applicants. She passed a civil service test, her physical, and the background check that was done on her. We got very good recommendations during her background check. So at this time, I'd like to recommend to council to hire Jennifer McGowan as a full-time police-fire dispatcher. This will be effective Monday, August 14th.
How long is that probation?
One year.
One year?
They go through a 12-week training period, and then it's a one-year probation.
Okay. Is she gonna, what does that mean, nights, swing, or what?
Well, the way, the way it works is they bid on shifts by seniority.
Gotcha.
During training, she will work four weeks of every shift. I believe she starts out on first shift, and then goes to thirds, and then eventually seconds. And then she'll work into whatever shift is available at that time, after she's done with her training.
I make a motion we approve the recommendation.
I'll second that.
Tommy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 11 is an employee status change. Mayor?
Yeah, I can handle both of those, both 11 and 12. As you know, the Wage Committee has been working on the changes in the ranges at the lower level, both in the Police Department and also the Fire Department. Mainly, the Police Department would be the dispatchers, and the Fire Department would be our firefighters full-time that we have there now. The plan is, is to get them more in the ranges where they belong compared to other areas in the future, and depending when the Salary Committee brings that to you, they're working on that diligently, and they're coming up with a pretty good plan. It not only will affect the lower ranges of these two departments, but it also will help in the Street Department and every place else if we get the thing going right. So we've been working on this since two or three months, which we're about three-quarters there. And of course, it'll be up to a new council and a new mayor to proceed with this, but at least we'll have something to present and be comparable to people in the other area. So the next two is just adding a little amount to each one of those, and then when the new raids go in, it's not gonna be such a drastic increase. In fact, some might be over the step right now of where they amount, so... That's been the report back to me from the Wage Committee, so I recommend that we do that. That was for three dispatches, I think Connie Lyden, Dana Andrews, and Alexander Smith. And the next one would be for Dustin Gilata and Jared McCann in the Fire Department.
So do we wanna do 11 and 12 together then?
It's however you wanna handle. You could do 11 and 12. It's all the same.
I make a motion we consolidate items 11 and 12 and go with the recommendation from the Wage Committee engineer.
I'll second that.
Tommy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
I might say that Tommy and Keith worked on this all last year, maybe the last couple of years, and now Rick and Judy have been diligently working on it. It's not an easy task to move all that. We've had comparisons with other towns and everything, so we're getting better. Of course, you gotta have the dollars to do it, but we're trying to tie all that in.
Right, right. Yeah, being on the Wage Committee, we've been trying to be fair to our employees while staying within our, the amount of money that we have available, so working hard at that. The next item is item number 13, a new hire for the Fire Department, Chief Siders.
Good evening. Council's been presented with a letter from myself in regards to hiring Colton Myers as a probationary volunteer firefighter with the Fire Department. Colton has passed his background investigation and his physical. Colton's also one of our junior firefighters, so I ask that council approve his hiring so we can get him started tomorrow.
I move to approve.
I'll second that.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chief, where does that put us as far as numbers?
Colton will be number 15 on the paid-on-call volunteer roster.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item number 14 is a resolution. Pat, please number and read.
Resolution number 28, 2017, a resolution to accept a $44,900 donation from the Bryan Soccer Association to the Parks and Recreation Department for lights at the Recreation Park Soccer Field.
Thank you. This is the second installment. The first donation was for $150,000. This one is for the 449, which brings us to the 1949 that we were quoted to do the project.
Now, where are we at in regards to the project itself, in regards to the bidding stage and the higher-end construction?
Right, we went through the consortium that allowed us to buy the materials and that kind of stuff. We've had our pre-constru...
Through the state?
Yep. We've had our pre-construction meeting. We have a timeline that's kinda set in place as to when everything will transpire, which is, as of right now, the middle of September. And hopefully, you know, within a couple of weeks after that, we'll have lights. So there is a chance that they will have... So, there is a chance that they will have some lights yet this year for soccer games. No promises, but...
Do you know what? Has the lighting been picked out? What the manufacturers, who is it?
Yeah, it's Musco.
It is Musco.
Yeah, they're Musco lights, they're LEDs, they're guaranteed 30-foot candles across the entire field with little to no overspray. So, as far as the path and the adjacent houses and all that kind of stuff, they are very certain we'll have no issues. We did a site, then we came out to the site and took a look around. The poles are actually marked already out there if you'd like to stop out and check. There's four poles that are marked. We're just, we're at the point now where we're just waiting on the contractor to show up and go. They're telling me middle of September will be the delivery on the poles, the arms, the heads, the bases, all that kind of stuff, and then the following week, the contractor will be in to start putting everything together. Contractor's out of Ottawa, County Electric, out of Ottawa. They were here for the meeting, so we had a really good meeting and hopefully, things stay on schedule.
$190,000 for the lights. If it runs over that, then they just have to go back and the soccer association has to go back and try to raise more money.
Well, the direction I gave the people, the Musco people in Ottawa or the County Electric people is, is at 1949, we have very little room to wiggle, okay? As of right now, they have it bid out as a turnkey project. If we get to the 1949 and we're starting to have some money concerns at that point, we'll sit down and see what we can do to try to save cost at that point.
On the other end, if you said 194, I would be surprised if they would come in a lot less than the 194, but for some reason, if they would come in and the project's all done and it's 180,000, something like that, where does the extra money just go? It's back to the soccer association?
Yeah, either that or what we could look to do, and I'd have to talk to Pat and Lori, but there may be, maybe they want to replace their goals or something like that, and we could, we could use that money to, as long as that's what they've told their donors, would be done with the extra money. That's kind of the key. I don't, I don't know exactly what they've promised to their donors other than they talked to them about lights. So, I know there's some other things within the program they would really like to do, but that's, we're just trying to get through one hurdle.
Whose choice is that to spend that money to wear? Is that the soccer association or is that the city, or the parks?
Well, the soccer association raised the money, so my guess...
So, they would have to say so on.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I wouldn't take the money that they donated to the city and spend it without having some form of conversation with them and the people within their organization to make sure that that's what they, they want to do and that's what they raised the money for and that's what they told their donors, all that kind of stuff.
I would assume so, but yeah, I was curious.
Yeah, we'll be very careful, Tommy. When we get to that point, we'll make sure we keep everybody up to speed as to, as to where the money has gone and what, you know, how much exactly the project costs at the end of the day and, you know, all that kind of stuff as, as we get end of September, October, and we try to wrap this thing up, we'll keep you all very much up to speed as to, as to what's going on and how it's going on and that kind of stuff.
Yes.